I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask each of the board chairs to open their meeting. I take a motion to open the meeting?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
We are open?
What else do next?
Yes, please.
We want to open the January 15, 2014, meeting of the Finance Committee. We need to take a roll.
President David Hurd, Joan Fons, Marilyn Jordan, Marilyn Donahue, Larry McDonald, Bonnie Cattulli, I'm sorry.
You're doing fine.
Jeff, oh, Jeff's not here.
Yeah, Don was here.
Yeah, Don Camerano and Tom Wetheren.
We're open.
Great.
Good evening and welcome to the January 15, 2014, meeting of the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen and Sewer Commissioners. We're meeting here jointly with the Finance Committee and the School Committee as required by the Wareham Town Charter to hear the school budget hearing. May I have the roll call, please?
President, Selectmen Titlebaum, Selectmen Whiteside, Selectmen Slavon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight and sincerely thank you for attending and being part of this process. The purpose of this public hearing is for the superintendent to present the 2014-2015 budget of the Wareham Public Schools and then to hear from you, our community members, our parents, teachers and staff, and hopefully some students. The school budget is part of the town budget and this public hearing is held because we want to hear from you as your elected and appointed officials. I hope you feel comfortable stepping up to the mic and asking a question this evening. Before turning it over to the superintendent, I just wanted to give you a brief overview of how we got here. In late September, early October, the School Committee, Board of Selectmen and FinCom got together to discuss the budget process and timeline and ultimately agree on guidelines and priorities moving forward. In October, the school principals and department heads developed budget proposals with the help of school councils, which some of you might not know is all volunteer run. In November, principal and department heads met with superintendent, the business manager, and the budget subcommittee to present key cost drivers for fiscal year 15. Late November and early December was spent tweaking the budget and finding cost savings and working with the town administrator to agree to a provisional budget that is included in the overall town number. January, additional meetings, brainstorming, and some really, and I was heard, I was told, really, really, really hard work. Work went into coming up with creative ways to save money, all that led us to the budget presentation today. I hope that helps, but if you have any question about the budget process when we get to the Q and A portion, please feel free to ask. Tonight, the evening will go like this. It's pretty simple. The superintendent will walk through the budget presentation. I will then first open it up to the committee members at this table to see if they have any comments or any questions. Then I'd like to open it again up to all of you. There's a mic over on this side here that I ask that you come up and you ask your question. And so we get to as many questions as possible. If you can, just limit your question to one, but please feel free to come back up and ask a second question. Lastly, I just wanted to thank the superintendent, our business manager, Michael, and our board members, Cliff and Jeff, who served on the Budget Advisory Committee, the administration and staff and school councils at each one of the schools, and the town administrator, Derek Sullivan, who have all put their hard work and actually helped put this budget together. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent. And just while she's getting up there, a quick note, because we always love an opportunity to promote a fundraiser that's going on in the schools. On Saturday, April 19, the Wareham Middle School will be holding, hosting a comedy night fundraising to benefit the Wareham Middle School. It's called World Gone Crazy, the comedic circus rocket, or the comedic rock and roll circus. This is a great event. It's held at Salerno's and the doors open at 6:30. You can purchase tickets. They're $25 per person. And you can purchase tickets by calling Chris Holbrook at 781-588-8200. And don't worry if you didn't write it down. This is also on our website, Wareham Public Schools, where all the budget presentation information is also up there tonight.
This evening, as I review our open hearing, during the open hearing, and as I review our FY '15 proposed budget, it will be our goal to provide the detail which will explain our budget proposal. We believe all students can achieve and education is one of the main keys to a successful life. It's our goal in the Wareham Public School to provide opportunity for students to achieve at their maximum potential. However, we realize that we cannot accomplish this task alone. We must have the help and support of our school community and our community at large. The proposed FY '15 budget amount is $27,704,74. This is a 3% increase over the FY '15 budget. This does not represent a level funded budget, nor does it represent a level service budget. Our commitment, though, to students remains the same, to provide students with a student-centered learning environment, to provide a rigorous academic learning environment for all students, and to provide our students with supportive and exceptional faculty and staff. Our district initiatives next year will include eighth grade dual enrollment with the high school, the STEAM Academy in seventh grade, college and high school dual enrollment, realigning our technology department, providing and supporting enrichment activities, reorganizing our elementary schools, and reconfiguring special education. Our goal was to provide a level service budget. A level service budget does not mean a level funded budget. A level service budget provides for increase in the budget number as it must reflect increased costs such as salaries, contract services, supplies, and materials. Also included would be increased special education costs and out-of-district costs. If a level service budget was presented this evening, the amount would be $28,469,721 or a 5.9% increase from FY '14. During the past six years, our grant amounts, which have been received by the district, have fluctuated from $4.7 million in FY '11 to our current amount, which is received to date as $1,780,000, or a difference during this timeframe of $2,969,175. Grants, both historically and currently, are used to fund salaries, purchase supplies and materials, professional development, and to fund initiatives. As grant amounts have been reduced, so has our ability to fund staff, materials, supplies, and professional development, as this money needs to come from the LEA budget. And while our grants revenues have decreased, the needs of our students have not. This slide presents, provides historical data from 2009 to the proposed budget of 2015 in the areas of salary. Listed two are the numbers of staff at the given year. Included in the salary lines but not in the staffing number are bus drivers, lunch monitors, and custodians. Since 2012, we've consistently overspent our salary lines close to $300,000 each year. This information, which we're presenting you in this format, is to offer an explanation of why the FY '15 budget reflects such an increase. Please note, we've closely tied the FY '15 budget to actual expenditures. We're less likely to rely on school choice and grant funds and our contractual salary Our contract services not only include out-of-district placements, but services for students and contract building cost. This is the most up-to-date information from the Department of Secondary, Elementary and Secondary Education, which is based on our end-of-the-year report. While actual net spending shows a slight increase in FY '13, this has been driven by a large increase in insurance for our active employees. This has increased from $1,475,191 in FY '12 to $4,816,853 in FY '13. An actual cost or increase of $3,342,662. This slide represents the proposed reduction in force by 16 staff members or 13.8 FTEs. This will come in a reduction of staff from administrators, teachers, custodians, paraprofessionals, and secretaries, which will total approximate savings of $662,038. A reduction of supplies and materials from all schools and central office in the amount of $103,209. To arrive at the proposed budget amount, I'm proposing the following: closing East Early Childhood Center, reconfiguring Minut and Deccus. Minut will house pre-K, K, and grade one. Deccus will house grade two, grade three, and grade four. This reconfiguration allows class sizes to remain in the low to mid twenties. No increase in transportation costs will be experienced. Grade levels will be united, which allows for grade level configuration. The estimated savings is over $280,000. I will provide an overview of the functions where we see an increase in our budget. In many areas, the reason for increase is we've adjusted the budget to reflect actual expenditures. The areas on this slide are increased as well as we must increase our dependence on grants and school choice. This slide shows curriculum leaders have been underbudgeted as well as contract salaries. The increase in the curriculum office represents the transfer from the line item Assistant Superintendent to Curriculum Director. This position was not funded in FY '14, rather the money was in the Assistant Superintendent line, we're just merely moving it back. Supplies and materials were drastically reduced in FY '14, which has left our schools without materials and supplies which are needed. We're very grateful as the town provided funding at the Springtown Meeting to fund technology materials. However, we're not assuming this will occur again in FY '15 budget year. Some monies from FY '13 were used to pre-purchase materials, and unfortunately, in this budget, we do not anticipate having sums to do so. The delivery of special education costs continue to rise, as reflected in the areas of PT and speech salaries, payment to member collaborative and home instruction. And in 2009, our student population was 3,230. We had 628 special education students, or 19%. In 2014, our student population, 2,778. We have 665 special education students, or 24%. As you know, federal and state laws mandate services, hence our costs continue to rise. Again, modest increase in professional development, athletic services, and pupil transportation. As we strive toward a financial solution, this goal will not realize, be realized in isolation. All parties must be willing to work collaboratively with flexibility and cooperation. Again, we continue to examine our budget lines, line by line, as providing a quality education for all students in the town of Wareham is our number one priority. And so at this time, I would turn it back to our chair to ask for questions.
Thank you very much. For the questions and comments, there are two things. One is, we understand that we didn't have slides for the audience, and that's one, because if you haven't gone to it yet, the Wareham Public School is a great, school's website is a great resource. We can go to find all the budget information that has been presented from the past all the way until tonight. This process is a very transparent process, all the way down to line item numbers in there. So if you have a chance, please go and take a look at that information. It's been up there since our first presentation a couple weeks ago. The second piece is that if you have a specific question from the committee members here or on the audience, if you have a question about a particular slide, then please just ask for us to go back to that. So we can, we can do that on the PowerPoint up there. And then also, if a question can't be answered tonight, because we don't have all the information, Jamie is here and she's going to be writing the questions down and also the next steps. And what we'll do is we'll provide answers to questions that we weren't able to answer tonight on the website also. Okay? So you'll have an opportunity that if, for some reason, you're like, "I'm not getting the answer that I need," we will note that and we will follow up, either in a phone call or on, or through the website. Okay? So with that, I just want to open up to any of the committee members. I'll start with the Board of Selectmen. If there's anyone there that has a comment or any questions.
I'm sure we do, but actually, I'd rather defer to the FinCom at this point. They're the financial committee, so they would be the best suited to lead off, I think.
Thank you.
Start here and work down.
Sounds great.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had one question with regard to the grant totals. I know that the figure that you used for FY '14 is $1,780 to date. Is that for fiscal year? Because that looks to me like that would be representative of about a half a year. And do you have expectations that you would get paid the other half, which would bring it in line with what we've had for other years?
We do have expectations that we'll continue to receive funds. We do anticipate about, to mirror what we received in FY '13, or FY '14?
Okay.
Thirteen, sorry, thirteen. I would like fourteen to be double, too.
And do you expect FY '15, will this be the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, a little bit less. We're really waiting on seeing what, what's going to be coming out. We're not sure Title I or any federal funds that may be slightly reduced. We're still watching what, what's going to be coming for FY '15.
Do you have the?
I do.
Want me to go get it? I can go get it. No, I'll go.
That's close enough. Just, just to follow up on that question, do we have grant writers on staff?
We have several people whose grant writing is considered in their job description, and we certainly are actively trying to recruit additional grant writers, because we would love to have additional grants.
And the other thing is, I noticed you mentioned several times in the budget presentation that you were budgeting closer to actual expenses as opposed to a figure. And my only concern with, that's close enough, it's working, is it working? Okay, good enough. Sometimes when you use actual expenses, you stand the risk of missing out on things. There could be some reductions in there, so that would be my only caution with using actual expenses. Thank you. It's a great budget.
Thank you.
Anybody? Anybody else? Oh, sound like.
I just have one question. It says sixteen positions. Could you define, what does FTE stand for?
Full-time equivalent. Full-time equivalent.
Full-time equivalent. Thank you.
Anybody else down there?
Larry? Is this one on? If I recall properly, it looks like we've had about a 10% reduction in student population since '09. What is the projection in the future, if you know, over the next few years for the student population?
We're anticipating leveling off. Currently, we've received some students coming back to us from out-of-district that had gone out for school choice. We've also been receiving school choice students coming in. We also have a rather large kindergarten class. We anticipate equally as large for next year. So our first grade next year will be significantly larger than in the past.
And is that a trend that you, you see continuing beyond the first grade for the next few years?
We do see that it will continue on the upswing.
Thank you.
I'm good right now.
Okay. You want a question?
I have a question on the salaries. I noticed it says department heads, 4.7%. Is that an increase, a raise, or you said something about being contractual? Is that in the contract that they are getting a 4.7% increase?
Sure.
That is, the increase. The increase is due to, as, it comes back to the earlier point of trying to match better expected expenditure, so it was slightly underbudgeted in the past, so we've adjusted the budget to match what we expect their salaries to be, taking into account the contractual obligations that we expect.
So the contract says we have to pay them X amount of dollars a raise by a certain percentage every year?
Not necessarily a raise, but it's also that, is primarily that we have, we'd underbudgeted, so the budget did not cover the full amount of the salaries this year, and so we've had to adjust the budget for that.
And that goes to the same thing for contract services?
Contract services actually covers a wide range of things, including special education services that we contract for. So it's basically anything we contract for, so it doesn't include employees, but whether there's expected increases in the contract prices that's been reflected here, or a greater demand for contracts, for contracted services.
Okay.
I think that's it. One more.
Thank you. I just want to clarify my questions on the grants. None of us think that we should be relying on grants to fill desperately needed holes that really should be taken in our budget, so I didn't want to give that implication. And I know you touched on it quickly, but could you just go back and speak to what this budget does as far as materials and technology? Because I know that's been something that's been lacking in the past, and I'm afraid we're still playing catch-up with that. So is this, is this adequate for those needs?
What we're, what we're trying to do by reconfiguring our technology department is to maximize the resources that we currently have and that we're budgeting for. We're reviewing any expenditure, so we're just looking for efficiencies. Because I agree with you, we need to increase our services that we can offer our students with technology and technology integration. We closely looked at moving to a one-to-one initiative at the high school and at eighth grade for our students. However, with this budget year and our budget predictions, we did not feel like we could do that. However, a one-to-one. Oh, I'm sorry. Explain one-to-one. A one-to-one is where we would provide a device for each student. We are looking at the Chromebooks. The Chromebooks seem to be very versatile. We also use Google Gmail, so it would be very applicable to our students and to our instruction. However, with that being said, we know we need to continue to purchase technology due to our test that will be coming in, the PARC test, which we're anticipating in 2016 now, I believe, 2015. And every student will need a device to take this test. So, yes, technology is a push. We know we need to increase technology. Technology does not take the place of instruction, nor is it our intent for it, too. But with that being said, our students are going to enter a world of where technology use is common, and we are obligated to provide our students with the education that will prepare them for their future.
And are all the schools now wireless?
Yes, all the schools are wireless. We're not 100% wireless in all our buildings. We're working at getting to that place. The other thing is because we have, the government has what's called E-rate, and so some of our costs are reimbursable by the, the government. And so when we increase our bandwidth, or when we increase certain things with technology, while it may look as an expense, it's reimbursable. And so it doesn't cost us nearly what it would cost the average consumer, because we're an educational institution.
Thank you. Anything?
It makes note of sixteen positions. In those positions, are any of those just normal retirees included in that sixteen? Or that's actual final teaching positions?
They're, we would, well, it depends. We don't always know if people are planned to retire yet, but where possible, we will, because obviously we want to avoid having to.
The reason I'm asking is a lot of times that when we hear the positions are being, you know, removed, there's been sometimes substantial numbers of, of those numbers have actually just been retirees where the position hasn't been refilled.
Well, I think what's important and why we talk about positions is even regardless of how that person leaves, losing that position is important. So if that person's a classroom teacher and they leave, you know, whether, if it's a retire, that position still has to be filled, or those students, you know, they stop being, we're not able to provide the service if that position is cut. So we still, you know, we still, however the person leaves, it still reduces our budget overall and has an impact on the students in the school.
The last piece is, it shows from 373 to 370 students from one year to the other for the last year. And I believe there was a 23 teacher or personnel reduction, but there's, there's a difference there between the 373 to 370, there's only three. So I'm just, I don't need, I don't expect an answer on either one tonight, but it's just not lining up from a year ago.
Yeah, okay. I don't know where, where that, oh, I know where that number comes from, yeah. The number you're quoting, where did that come from?
Comes from the report.
It's this one that you see up there. So this one has, in, well, in '14, it's 370, the employees is 373. All the way to the right.
Yeah, so the 20-person reduction, he said, done.
You said a 20-person reduction or 16?
18 percent. Excuse me. It was, we were talking about 16, but the previous year, I believe there was 23 positions to be removed, but your figures are only showing three.
Oh, I know what they're asking. Do you know what they're asking?
Yeah, I know. No, I don't know the answer.
Last year, and let me just clarify to make sure that I'm understanding this. Last year, the number was given 20 points for reduction. Is that correct? And we're not reflecting that in the reduction on our slide up here?
Correct.
Okay. What had happened was we had some increase in our elementary that we needed to add some people. We also had not, there was a counselor that was cut, reduced from the middle school. We also had not, there was a counselor that was cut, reduced from the middle school. And in a building of eight hundred and some students, I would find it very difficult to open a building without a school counselor. There were some other positions that had intended to be reduced that were not reduced.
Just further to that point, I think you'd actually have to get almost a roster of all the positions from previous years, compare them to where you ended up coming into this year from the last academic year, and then seeing where you are currently in order to make any reasonable comparisons. And I certainly don't expect anybody to generate that kind of report in response to a question here tonight, but perhaps in the future, just for illustration purposes, that information might be available. The other piece to that, that's sort of corollary, would be if, I appreciate hearing the enrollment figures seen to have stabilized, but perhaps, given that we're looking at numbers back to two thousand and nine, perhaps the enrollments back to two thousand and nine could also be provided at some future date. And interesting, it would be interesting to see them by category of school, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school. I know there's been some grade shifting, so that would have to be obviously noted, you know, asterisk, I guess if you will, for this year, where you added another grade to the middle school. But I think for comparative purposes, you know, to educate those of us who don't see this sort of thing every single day, that might be helpful to our understanding of, you know, where the money was, who was getting it, and who was being taught with it, just so that we can, we can sort of see that progression for the past five or six years. I would like, however, to commend the superintendent for her move in shuttering the first school. I had the pleasure to attend in the Wareham Public Schools back in nineteen sixty-five, which was the East Wareham School. It's a little bit sad to think that the first school I went to for first grade is being shut down, but in nineteen sixty-five, it was old. In nineteen, in two thousand and fourteen, it's ancient. So I think this was a good move, it's an efficient move. I can't even begin to think what it cost to heat that place, given the, you know, the small size of the school, the age of the facility, I think it was a good move. And I also think the, the grade shuffling that you've done in order to achieve curriculum matching will, will provide not only educational benefit, but also some cost savings for you as well going forward. So I commend the superintendent for that move, I think that was long overdue.
Thank you.
I would just say the student enrollment numbers were part of our pack that we provided at our last meeting and are on the website, and go back to two thousand and nine by school as well.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Your explanation of the number of people notwithstanding, how did you pay for positions that were not in the budget that was approved? In other words, you stated that you were cutting back twenty-four FTEs or something like that, and that that number was there. If you added them back in, how did you pay for them?
The only thing that I would say is that, is that the, the current administration was not responsible for the previous reduction or, you know, so I think that it's difficult for the superintendent to answer that question, but you can answer the question anyway. But I, I agree, and I, I think that one of the things that we have to do is take a look, as Mr. Tiedbaum said, and look at, dive into that a little bit more, and do the apples-to-apples comparison as much as we can. So to the statements about, we did say twenty-four, and now in this presentation, it's only twenty, I think that's something that I would want to dive into to be able to get you the correct answer.
Thank you.
Anything else from the selectmen?
All set?
All set, thanks.
Now it's up to you. Again, this public hearing is for the community to be able to ask questions of this budget, of the superintendent, of your elected appointed officials. So please, if you can, if you have a question, please go to the mic over to the left, and we will do our best to be able to answer the question. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address us? Congratulations, the first one, that's always the hardest one.
I am graduating this May from college with a degree with early childhood and developmental psych. So my question is coming from developmental stage of why are we changing or moving children from first grade to brand-new school when they're just learning and getting to know their surroundings, trusting the teachers, and bringing them into a brand-new school system where they won't know the teachers they trust and the developmental stages that we're messing up is confusing for me to understand why we would approach that. Thank you.
When we looked at the reconfiguration and how we were going to possibly continue to offer a quality program, class sizes of thirty, class sizes of thirty-two, just didn't appeal to any of us as we are sitting looking. We've exhausted every possible option of revenue that we can possibly shift, so there was no place else to go. So we needed to go to the drawing board, and part of my administrative team, you know, part of their charge is to, as we develop the budget, is to think of creative ideas, to think of how are we going to continue to offer a quality program? And so really, they, we spent a lot of time with this, and it was through their, their expertise and brainstorming, we were able to come up with this proposal of why we would shut East Academy down, to move the preschool students to Minnet and move second grade to third and fourth from Minnet to Deccus. If we lived in an ideal world, this isn't something that we would be talking about, but we aren't, and we're in a fiscally financial, financially strapped environment, and so we're trying to think of every possible option. Teachers will be moving with the students at both ends. We fully intend to have various open houses to allow students to, to see their, the facility, to meet with the teacher, and really the transition from pre-K to K will be much more seamless for the students, because they'll be in the same building. As well, if we do a multi-age group with our kindergarten, that will allow us to tap into additional, sorry, grant funds, though, with the state, as this, as this program would meet the needs. So we feel like we've, we've come up with a, a plan that works. Is it ideal? Well, we're not happy that we have to do this, but we do think that it meets the needs of our students, it continues to off, offer class sizes in the low twenties, and we have some very caring and wonderful teachers. I have no doubt this will be the very best for our students.
If you want to add to it, go ahead.
If you would, I could probably add to that educationally. Excuse me. Transitions are hard for the little ones, but in a way, each, each student gets a transition every September when they get a new teacher. But what I like about this configuration, to be quite honest with you, is, is these students are together basically for a lot longer time, because they're, they're going to be together at a pre-K to two school, and then they're going to be together to one school, and they're going to be together for a two to four school. And so they're, they're literally going to be together the whole time. And what I like about this configuration, other than the budgetary implications, is the fact that we're basically going to have two schools that are staffed with specialists, because now the focus is going to be on pre-K and one, and also two, two and three. So I think, two, three, and four. So I think that by doing this, we can really zero in on what the educational needs are at that developmental age, at that developmental stage, and to put our resources in the best possible place. So there are some, some really sound economic reasons for doing it, but I think there are some very, very sound educational reasons for doing it. And I'm one that, I'm usually the resident cynic, but this approach does make a lot of sense to me, both educationally and financially.
I have a question about the cuts to the teachers. Where are those teachers going to be cut from? What school, what positions?
Unfortunately, I'm not able to divulge that at this time, just due to, we've not made notification to staff, it's not a final budget, and in all fairness, I would never share publicly where the cuts would come prior to making notification to staff.
Could you tell us what schools you're looking at, as opposed to what positions?
We're looking at all schools.
So my thought is the transparent budget isn't transparent if we don't know what teachers are going to be caught.
Sure. The one thing that I'll say to those is, following up on what the superintendent said, the, the budget isn't final yet. So the budget that we presented tonight is the number that we're proposing to the town and to the overall town meeting voters of the budget that we would like. And the town budget, and again, it's, it's one budget, but again, we don't know what that looks like at the very end. So to make any speculation or decisions or anything at this point is very, very difficult, because we don't know if that number will be greater or less. Because it's ultimately, we're presenting our budget, but the, at the very end of the day, it is up to the town meeting voters on what the final town budget is and what it looks like.
Since no one's standing behind me. So we know you're not going to get more money. It hasn't happened in the last, I can't tell you how many years, so we're pretty clear you're not going to get more money. So it's just to me, because the high school has been cut, 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 and these teachers work really hard, not that all the other schools don't work as hard, and with the technology that's upcoming, and all the kids going to be needing tablets, you're cutting, is that going to be more positions? We couldn't even afford textbooks. I'm just curious what your thoughts are.
So the one thing that I've seen during this budget cycle is that the superintendent, the administration, that they've been working closely together. So, and not that that hasn't happened in the past, but I'm saying this year that it has been a close working relationship with each one of the building administrators, with the superintendent, to come up with what you see in front of you. So what, what I'm confident in is that the building administrators, as well as the superintendent, will make what's in the best interest of what their schools need and their students need in that school.
So will the parents and the rest of the town know what positions are going to be cut before town meeting and everybody votes on the budget, or will that be after the fact?
Will the people know before town meeting what the cuts will be?
No. Actually, there's somebody, hold on, there's someone from the FinCom, yes.
Ultimately, one of the issues we faced in this town since I've been on the finance committee and before that, is you're right, we keep seeing a reduction in the revenue. But ultimately, that's really up to the voters, whether or not we have an increase in the revenue. If you look at it from an entire town's perspective, the number is huge. And if we came back to you and said, well, guess what, that would require people in this town to put more money into it, we're not getting a warm reception to that. So you're asking us to, you know, and I understand, they do work hard, I think everybody in this town works hard, but ultimately, we are only able to work with what we have, and if we don't get more, then this is what we get. And it's sad, but that's the reality of it, the voters are the one that really control this.
I do understand your concern. I do understand your concern. I've spent pretty much all of my adult life at the high school, and it's got a soft place in my heart. But in terms of transparency of the budget, this is a very transparent process, right? We have public hearings, we have a budget subcommittee, and to be quite honest with you, and I've been in this business a long time, you probably, we probably won't know well into after-town meeting exactly who is going to be cut and for what reason. But because the deliberation, when we go to the, look at the budget in its entirety, and particularly the staff line item, is what will do the least harm? And when we talk about the least harm, we're talking about programs and kids. And that is always the guiding, the guiding light for us on who gets cut and why. So I think that there is a very deliberative process when the budget is finalized as to, you know, what cuts will be the least harmful to our kids. So, so you're never, I, I don't think you're going to know one month of the summer, the finality of the cut process. But that's just the nature of the budget process, and we have to look at all of the parameters, all of the variables, when the superintendent and the administrative team finally comes up with a final cut package.
Right. Do you want, okay, so just one more comment, because I'm seeing there are people that I just need to, yep.
Just further to this point, in January, you want to be very careful about discussing what positions may be eliminated when you've got employees under contract, because doing so may constitute collective bargaining agreement violations and get the school department in trouble with the unions. So that's another reason why, until they have a final number, and until actually the cuts are made and the people who are being laid off are informed of that, the process is rather secretive for that reason. And on the town side, we face a similar dilemma. We can talk about cutting positions. Generally speaking, our line items are a little bit different, we go by departments. I think people can read the tea leaves, given the smaller number of employees we have in certain departments, and figure out, you know, who's staying, who's gone, that sort of thing. But for the school department to get into that level of detail, I think they, they are wise to wait until they have the final budget, and that way, that way that they can, you know, protect themselves. The other piece to all this is, I don't think you encourage morale among a teacher population when you start talking about who's gone in January, when they've got to teach through the end of the year. So I think there's a multitude of reasons why you're not going to get that information tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually have two questions, and I know I'm only supposed to have one, but I will say them quickly. My first question, it's the answers that are taking long, not the questions, but, that being said, my first question is, and I mean no disrespect, I'm obviously a Minnet parent, I mean no disrespect to Deccus, but why are you sending the MCAS grades to Deccus who has year after year not done well on their MCAS scores and Minnet has?
When we sit down and we looked at where the students would be best suited, we looked at several things. We looked at, at the number and the size of the building, and we looked at the certifications and expertise of the building principal. The building principal at Minnet is early childhood and has early childhood experience. We also know that, we've had this conversation with the state as far as when we reconfigure, what would that do to our scores? And unfortunately, it doesn't do anything. However, what we were told is, Deccus was just right on the cusp of going to level two, that they would anticipate with the fifth grade being at the middle school, that likely they would move to level two this year. Now, of course, that's all in the future, and we don't have any way of really determining until we receive the scores. But given the number of classrooms, given certifications, the move was decided to go to Deccus.
And the other question I had is, and this just could be me not understanding the budget, but how are you saying that you're going to reduce classroom sizes, but yet you're doing sixteen layoffs? And you're saying that your biggest class And you're saying that your biggest class coming in is kindergarten, and I assume kindergarten might be a layoff. So, how is that going to reduce the classroom numbers?
Okay. Part of why reconfiguring is so attractive as far as balancing class sizes, this year, we were in a situation at Minnet in 4th grade. I think we have 27, 28. By the time of the school year, when, when we entered, we couldn't add a teacher. It was, it was too late to add a person. But when you looked at the Minnet's class sizes, we were in the, Deccus, sorry, the low, low to mid twenties. If we were all in one building as far as 4th grade altogether, then the evening out, you would have that flexibility, you would have nine sections, you would have 10 sections. In 1st grade, we're going to have 12 sections. But we know where we need to keep the class sizes. And because we're all together, it's very easy to do that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can I just ask a clarification question? Because I want to make sure I understand this and that everybody out there understands this as well. My understanding, the way I'm reading this and being explained, is that Minnet will only house preschool through grade, grade 1? And then Deccus will only house 2, 3, and 4? Am I correct? All right, so I'm understanding this. So, instead of being in two districts, mixed grades altogether, they will simply be on opposite? All right, thank you.
But altogether.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Can you, would you mind stating your name?
Oh, absolutely. My name's Aisling Quinn. I'm a lifelong resident of Wareham. I currently have a four-year-old at the East Wareham School. That being said, you mentioned that transportation costs, that budget wasn't going to change. So, how is that going to work for my little guy? Does that mean he's going to be on the bus all day?
No, he will not be on the bus all day. You know, we've been looking at the routes. We do not anticipate any route being over 40 minutes, and that would really depend on the site of town that you would live on. We still will continue to bus preschool students per the IEP process. And if it's half-day busing, we will continue to provide that as well.
Okay, so 40 minutes, though, that's a long time for a bunch of five-year-olds, right? I mean, I know mine.
You're right, but we have routes that length at this point now. And not every child will be affected, it will be very few.
Okay. Quick, I'm sorry to steal your thunder for a second. So, let's just say hypothetically, I'll be the elephant in the room. What if you have three kids that are all unfortunately going to be in different schools now, so you have to catch up with all these buses? What are you going to do?
Yeah, we've, we've looked at this. What we know is, we have 38 families at Minnet that would possibly have students in two buildings. We have 30 families at Deccus that would possibly have students in two buildings. You know, we've talked about if my, if as a parent, I wanted to pick up one of my children at one building, how in the world am I going to get across town to do so in a timely fashion? What we would also, what we would look at doing is some kind of a transporting over on the bus with one student, letting the student get off, and the parent could pick them up, if it was after school or something like that. During the day, if you had a normal day, then yes, your students would be on, could possibly be on the bus for a while. We've not determined if we would run a bus route special for Minnet and a bus route designed for Deccus. That's not been determined as of yet.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi. Andrea Boprey. My daughter is 2nd grade at Minnet, and I have a 16-month-old. I have a couple of quick questions. One, with your overall shifting budget, technology, has any research been done in comparison with other schools that have shared this similar model of what you're implementing? If so, is there, what is their success rate? Mainly, not so much on the budget and the cuts, because we all know everybody faces those kind of things, each town. But the shifting of grades, where you've decided to break them up in blocks? And also with the technology, what grade level are you looking to implement? The Chromebooks? And is there a cost to parents? Will there be a cost to parents?
The first question, have we looked at other schools? We, if we move forward, we are going to be sending teachers out to look at other model school districts. Our principals have done research about what's best practice, what's working. And so, we do come to the table with their expertise. Hence, the decision was made. However, as we move forward, we intend to have a more inclusive group, include parents, include teachers in this process, because we know it's a change. We need to hear everyone's voice, and we want to make sure that we've answered all questions. So, if we move ahead, we are at the tip of the iceberg as far as opening up for community forums, parent informational sessions, as well as staff informational sessions. Technology, as far as a cost, right now, we are not planning on moving ahead with a one-to-one project. If we would move ahead with a one-to-one project, every school district that has done so said it's an absolute necessity to make sure that there is a cost assigned to the device, because there does need to be ownership with the student. What the cost would be would certainly vary depending on the device, depending on the area.
And with that, if a family could not afford the cost, where does that fall? Who does that cost go to? Because obviously, that child can't be without the device. So, does that fall on the town? Does that fall on the state? Does that, who picks up that cost if a family has hardship?
Sure. We certainly would build in accommodations for that. Same thing as free and reduced lunch, we would have a sliding scale. Whatever we would do, we want to ensure our students has, have equal access as all students do.
She had mentioned, the one before me had mentioned the classroom size. That's always scared me, once you go over 20. I get nervous about the one-to-one ratio, each child getting that, that piece from that teacher that's really important for their learning and development. With your budget cuts, cutting back 16 positions, and your classroom sizes only supposedly increasing by maybe four or five, maybe seven students, will they be having aides come in to help? Is that something that's currently, I don't know what's over at Deccus versus Minnet, because I'm over at Minnet, but I just didn't, I didn't know if that's already in place?
We currently have paraprofessionals that come into classrooms. Part of that's mandated by student IEPs. Part of that for kindergarten is mandated by the Early Childhood Grant. We certainly will continue to comply with all regulations. Class sizes with our reconfiguration model are low. We're thrilled. That would not happen if we did not reconfigure.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi. My name's Nicole Calvin. I'm just going to preface my question by saying I really have always loved Wareham Public Schools. My older children have gone through, have excelled. I have a daughter who's a junior at Bentley, has gone to the London School of Economics. But I also have a 1st grader who's now going to go to Deccus, and it's going to be moved from a Level 2 school to a Level 3 school. And I'm wondering if you're going to continue the employment of a principal who cannot raise MCAS scores? I would like to know if you got, if you plan on continuing the employment of a principal who cannot raise MCAS scores?
I'm sorry, I just really can't answer that question. We certainly support all our, I support all my administrators. We work at raising everybody's expertise, mine included. And our interest is in the best interest of our district, of our students, and we will continue to employ quality personnel.
So, what would make me want to keep my child in the district? I've had, I mean, I have a daughter who's a junior in college. I have a daughter who's a sophomore at the high school. I have a daughter who's in 7th grade in the middle school. What would make me want to keep my 1st grader in this whole, like, where we're, I feel like we're going down?
Oh, I'm really sorry that you feel like that, because we really think we're on the upswing. We have some, you know, we have some really fantastic programs getting ready to launch. Our class sizes and our elementaries are going to be in the low twenties. I, I think that's fabulous in today's economy and...
That's what we already are, though. I mean, my son only has 24 kids in his class, so that's all I know.
You're right, you do now. But if we would go where we did not reconfigure, you would not. You would be looking at 30. But I, you know, when I walk through and I see all the great things going on, I think this is quite an exciting place to be, and I certainly hope that you agree with us.
I mean, I do, I do think that my daughters have done well and have excelled in the public school system in Wareham. But I just feel like maybe this isn't the right move. I mean, I just wanted to express that to you, that I mean, I have had kids that have raised your scores because they've been advanced on MCAS. So, I have kids that have done that. But I'm considering removing my child from Wareham Public Schools because of this, because I just don't think it's a great idea. And I don't want him to go to a school that's underperforming, because I expect more from my kids.
Well, before I pass this off, I would invite you to come and walk through Deccus with me. I would invite you to come and see the great things that are happening at Deccus as well, because it's fabulous. Fabulous at both elementaries. Okay. Any parents, I would be happy to take you through tours. And I turn this over to Mr. Swett, who's been patient.
I think everybody on this committee would, would tell you that I love numbers. And I use them as a way of trying to get a better understanding of, of issues that can be, that can be a little confusing. But I will tell you, there is too much emphasis on the MCAS and not enough emphasis on the quality of the individual teacher providing your child's instruction. So, while it can be a guide, if I was making a decision for my child, the most valuable thing you could possibly do is get really involved in your kid's education.
I am. I spend every single Monday the entire day in the classroom.
And really get to know your child's teacher. And after that, everything is really secondary, including MCAS scores. If you have confidence that your child is learning and that your teacher cares and has engaged your child in, in education, and there's a great educational environment in which your child is learning, it's all good.
I think that's great. And I always thought that, like, we put too much emphasis on MCAS, but the town and the state puts a ton of emphasis on MCAS. So, when you're looking at it that way, when I didn't agree that MCAS should be so important, but the town and the state do, what do you do then?
The federal government and the state are so desperate to try and figure something out, they've thrown all these mandates and, and numbers and tests at us. We don't have any choice in responding to that, because they are mandates and frequently unfunded. That does not mean we should fall victim to their mindset.
I agree.
And, and ultimately, you as a parent are the, the most important factor in this entire process, along with your teacher and the relationship between the two. One person's opinion.
Thank you.
Everyone previously to me kind of touched on all my little questions, but I did just want to say that...
Could you state your name, I'm so sorry?
Shannon Alshimer. I'm a newbie to Wareham and the school system. My daughter is a kindergartner. And, you know, one of my biggest concerns in moving to the town of Wareham in itself was the school systems. And I was lucky enough to find out that we were part of the Minnet School District and for her to attend there. And I'm happy with the way things are, but knowing that, you know, there is that emphasis on grades and versus the Minnet, Deccus, and the MCAS, that's concerning for me. And I know that there are other kindergarten moms that I've spoken to that have already started reaching out to other places simply because of the issue of switching the grades and everything. By, one thing I just want to say is that I don't know how, if you expect the numbers to keep increasing, how you're going to cut so many teachers that, I mean, my, my daughter's class is still expanding. It got a new student on Monday. Now, 21 or 22. I'm lucky enough that one day a week, I am in the classroom. And she has a phenomenal group of teachers that she works with. A lot of it in your proposal says that the special education is going to be cut. And those are the things that they really need in the classroom. There's not enough hands in the classroom. And I don't ever think that there ever can be enough hands in the classroom. So, I just think that, you know, there are days that I see four different teachers in the classroom at a time helping. And for five-year-olds, that, that's still not enough to keep them all, you know? I mean, I, I just think that switching from one to another is really going to hurt you in the long run, because I do know a lot of people that are already looking for other school systems.
So, I just wanted to speak to this because I have a 2nd grader at Minnet right now. So, the concerns that everyone have in this room around the reconfiguration, I had the same thing. When going through the presentations and hearing from the administrators and actually the benefits that this will have towards our kids, especially around having smaller class sizes, is huge. My son had a class size starting off at 21. It creeped up to 24, it's now back. You know, you never can really control the flow, but it all goes back to the teacher and the helpers that are in that school. The two things that I'll say is, one is, when it comes to special ed, the special, the sped budget is actually being reconfigured. So, it's not that there's a cut. The state mandates how much we spend on special ed. So, it's being reconfigured. And so, it's not that there's a decrease of students that are in the classroom. Again, within this budget, every decision, decision is being made to make sure that the classrooms are the ones that are not, that are least affected by this budget cycle that we're going into. The last thing that I'll say is that the 16 positions that are up there, there's an assumption that those are all teachers, they're not. So, it's 16 full-time employees. So, I just, I want to make sure that people understand that, that doesn't mean that it's 16, it's 16 full-time employees. 13 full-time employees.
I'd like to just make a comment on some of the things that you said, because I, I feel very badly that you expressed a doubt by other parents. Let me assure you that when we discussed the possibility of this reconfiguration, that I approached it strictly, strictly from an educational perspective. I really, from where I sit, I really don't care about the dollars and cents at this particular point in time. I want to know if it was good for our kids. And I can honestly say, based on almost 50 years in education and a few degrees, that I think that this configuration is a benefit to achievement. I think our students will achieve at higher levels because of this configuration, because now we're dealing with a school of specialists that we can concentrate on specialized area, as opposed to being what I call generalists. So, we're going to be concentrating on three grades. And I think that that is a definite benefit. The other thing is that I've been in Wareham an awful long time, too. And I think that people get kind of caught up with, with the attitude that things are just good enough in Wareham. And that's, that's really kind of a bad attitude to have, because I can honestly testify to the number of years that I've been in, I started teaching in Wareham in 1966, that wonderful things are happening at both elementary schools right now. Now, unfortunately, you know, we've got Deccus school that did not, did not break that threshold on the MCAS scores. But if you take a look at what our Deccus students are doing in comparison to the state, in comparison to the rest of the country, our Deccus students are doing very, very well. So, this idea that if you send a student to Deccus school, that somehow or other, they're going to get a substandard education, I can't, I can't subscribe to that. I believe that you've got honest, dedicated teachers at Deccus that go to work every day and care desperately for their kids. And they want their kids to succeed. And I think that this configuration will provide, you know, don't forget, a lot of those teachers that are now at Minnet are going to be at Deccus next year, you know, being specialists in grades 2, 3, and 4. So, I, I want to put, if I can, just based on my experience, to put your mind at rest and anyone else that, that has doubts, the good things are happening at our elementary schools. schools, and unfortunately, it's a number. And because Deccus didn't make that threshold or make that cutoff, believe me, wonderful things are happening at both of our elementary schools.
Okay. Thank you.
There was just one comment here.
Yeah, there seems to be a general concern about, uh, thank you, Chairman Huguen. Uh, there seems to be a general concern, what I'm hearing here, uh, about, uh, students going to Deccus as opposed to, uh, before this plan, they would have gone to Minnet. And I think people have to understand, as, uh, Dr. Sylvia just said, you're going to have two entirely different schools next year. They're not, it's not, unless there's something in the water at Deccus that for some reason causes problems over there, uh, you're going to have an entirely different school. You're going to have a different, uh, faculty makeup over there. You're going to have a different makeup of kids, and so, uh, I don't think you can look at it as the facility itself is the issue. Uh, you can't do an apples-to-apples comparison, uh, of the MCAS scores that were achieved, uh, in Deccus and, and project that into the future, because again, it's going to be a completely different institution. Uh, Minnet will be a completely different institution. So the only baseline you'll ever have for those two new schools will be the next round of MCAS, uh, and that will set the new baseline. That's how you're going to have to see those schools going forward.
Hi, my name is Heather Hogan. Um, I think that a lot of thought went into this, um, budget. I think that the concerns that I have, the one thing, the reason that I got up so quickly was, um, about the busing. My kids are at Minnet. They get on the bus at two-fifty, and they arrive at my house at three-thirty to three-forty. So going from Deccus to where I live, that it's going to be a substantially longer ride, and they're probably going to have an hour or two, an hour and fifteen minutes on the bus, and unless they're reconfiguring how they're going to do that. So I hope that that's really taken into consideration, because a lot of the problems that happen on our bus are due to unstructured time for students who have had a hard time sitting all day and get on a bus with, with no structure. So I think that's something that really needs to be considered.
And it will be.
Can I just speak just to one point to that? So it was the same concern that was expressed when this first came up, not only from, uh, the board members, but also from administrations. It has to be a piece of the process even before it came here. And so similar, the similar way that when the fifth grade moved to the middle school, that what went along with that plan was a reconfiguration of routes. The same exact thing has to happen here. It's not the same bus system, so your children that are on the bus at the time that they are now, all of a sudden, you might be scrambling around because they are showing up, you know, thirty minutes earlier. So again, this is not that every single child is going to have the same bus route. Many of them are going to have different bus routes.
Okay. And can I just make my comments and then ask one really quick question, or I can get in line, whatever you.
No, no, no. That was broken.
I have a lot to say. I've been writing.
From the first one, so we're just going to go with this flow.
Okay. So, um, my other question, um, is, I know for my kids that, I have a daughter going into fourth grade, and she's already worried about going to middle school. So for her to transition to Deccus and then to middle school within two years at a time is really concerning as a parent, because that really is going to affect, I think, her development. So the other comment that I have is, I think an extraordinary amount of care needs to be put into the plans that get put into place for these families to transition their kids to another school district. Um, I think a lot of care needs to go to the teachers, too, because I've seen teachers move from Hammond to East to Hammond to Minnet, and that has a huge effect on the ability to get ready for the school year, the ability to, um, have supplies for the school year, especially because I've seen teachers lose some of their belongings during the move. So I think not only do the students need to be considered, but also the teachers, and how much time it's going to take realistically to move all those teachers into another school district. And also, I think a lot of team building needs to be done, because you do have two separates. So these are the concerns as a parent that I hope are considered. Um, and my last question is, enrollment is down, but I think, and I just saw this quick, so I don't know if I have the right, um, numbers, but I think enrollment went down, but special education went from nineteen percent to twenty-four percent, and now there's a reconfiguration. Having students in special education, I'm concerned at what that's going to look like for my students and other students that I know. What, what does a reconfiguration consist of, and what will I expect to see for my students, um, and the, and the other kids that I know, uh, when that comes down? What does it realistically look like?
Well, what you will see will be quality programs that you expect from your school system. Um, we certainly are looking at our caseloads with our teachers. We're looking at how we provide services. We're looking at, can we offer services in district with in-district staff rather than contracting out without a district, because when you contract services out to bring people in, it's a huge number, and can we be more efficient? So these are all pieces that we're looking at, and as you know, the IEP drives what's being offered, and that certainly is first and foremost in our minds. Um, and just to speak for a few minutes, a few seconds about what you said earlier, we do know there needs to be a lot of care given for all parties, parents, community, students, staff. We know it's a change, and that's why, as we move forward, and if this is our decision, we certainly will outreach for all parties to join us, because collectively, we hope to cover all the points. If we keep it just in a very isolated few, we know we're going to miss things, and we cannot afford to miss things. Thank you.
I'll just add the custodial staff needs a lot of support in all of this. Yeah. Especially since last year.
We don't, we don't do change well. I don't think anybody does, so.
But, you know, I just want to remind everyone, the superintendent said, um, in the very beginning of the comments, that, um, that this is the first step. When it comes to the reconfiguration of the school, this is the first step, and that there will be open forums where, um, more of an intimate, I'm, I'm hoping that it's double the people that, you know, are here tonight that actually come and get their questions answered. So we're going to have a very thoughtful, I mean, like when we transitioned the fifth grade and even more, we're going to have a very thoughtful process that goes through, so then, like the superintendent said, that parents are involved in the process, but also they get all of their concerns out there, because again, we know that, you know, any transition is hard. We're not going to think of everything, well, we are going to think of everything, but just in case we don't, we want to make sure that, that parents and students and the administrators and the teachers are all part of that, to be able to help and make it successful. So this is just the first step.
Thank you. And I just have one more comment. I'm sorry. Um, the other can, the other thing that you increased was, um, professional development, and I think that's terrific, because I love training. So, um, but the one concern that I have is, um, some of my students this year have had substitute teachers five, six, seven times. They are not getting, when, my daughter keeps coming home with math homework that is being taught incorrectly by the substitute, and the next day, the teacher has to correctly do it, not to mention that, you know, the kids aren't getting really the same daily routine that they would have, um, with a substitute. So I, you know, I think that one more thing that I would love for you to think about is, um, the training of substitutes, or at least the expectations of substitutes. I don't currently know what they are, but I do think if you're going to have substitutes frequently in the classroom, that there should be some standard of expectation for those people working with our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Denise Langley, and I have two children that currently go to Minnet Forest. My question has to do with, um, I'm one of those parents that falls into that thirty families that have children who will be split into two separate places. I have no problem with the reconfiguration. I think that, um, it's exciting to see the grade levels be together. Um, my concern is how I'm going to get them there, because I choose not to bring my children, put my children on the bus. And I also, um, as far as busing goes, I'm concerned about busing, because, um, I would like to put my children on the bus, but I'm wondering if any thought has been given to, um, monitors on the bus, whether they be paid or volunteer. Um, so can you? That's two separate questions. I tried to add them in. Um, but, and my question about me and, and bringing my children was, um, I wondered if there was any thought to staggering the times of the, the children would start, because there'll be grade levels at one and higher grade levels at the other.
Um, this process is ongoing. So yes, even today, we sat and we were thinking about, okay, let's look at start times, let's look at configurations, and how would that all fit together? So we have given consideration for people exactly like you that tend to drive your, your children to school. How are we going to make sure that that works? Um, so that's a work in progress, and we would be very happy to have you join our committee when we have one.
I know that would happen.
And as far as volunteers and monitors on the bus, you know, we, we constantly look at, okay, how are we going to ensure that what's going on the, on the bus needs to continue to go on the bus? You, you see what I'm saying?
Say that again.
We don't want behavior on the bus that shouldn't happen.
Mm-hmm.
That's why we have cameras. That's why if we have a bus that is causing us some concern, we do have a monitor that we will slide over and put on the bus. At this point, to hire monitors for every bus, we just fiscally cannot afford it. Volunteers, we've not explored that option. That certainly will, may be a topic of conversation, and how would we do that? I'm not sure.
And just the last point on that, um, if people have gone, I'm pushing this Wareham Public School website, but if you do go to the Wareham Public School website, the superintendent has added a button on there for bus incidents. So any parent, um, community member, if you're seeing inappropriate behavior, you're able to report that on the Wareham Public School website at warehampublicschools.org.
Thank you.
Identity to you. Dot org? Thank you. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Bridgette Kearns. I, um, grew up here in Wareham and went through the public school system myself, and I think I got a pretty good education.
You did.
Came back, put my kids in school, and was like, what happened in Wareham? Um, and maybe it hasn't been such a huge change, because I think actually, my daughter is getting a good education at Deccus, despite it being a level-three school. Um, I think she's had good teachers, and it's a bummer to always hear MCAS, 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 MCAS. Um, so that is, that is a bummer. And when I think about redistricting, I want to know, how is it going to enhance her education or enhance my four-year-old, who's now going to go to kindergarten at a separate school? Because I can think of it two different ways, and I'd like to think with my head and make sure that I'm providing both of them with the best educational opportunity, and that if this is going to provide them the best educational opportunity, I'm on board. But if it's, if it's just to make numbers work or to make sure that classroom doesn't have twenty-seven kids while over here, we got twenty-four, and really, we could even them out, but have, everybody could have twenty-five kids, I want to make sure they're both getting good educations, because, you know, if I think with my heart, I want my kids to be in the same school. There's benefits for them to be together. Logistically, I'm a working parent. I'm not, I don't have the luxury of driving my kids to school, and how am I getting them on two different buses and getting to work on time, catching two different buses home? So those are logistical issues that I have concerns with, and, and just the fact that they're separated. But I could put, I could figure those out if I could hear from you more information about how this is going to enhance their educational opportunities, and not just that the MCAS scores are going up. What other towns do this? What other elementary schools offer school, offer split elementary levels like this? And are those schools really thriving? What's happening in those systems?
We would like you to hear from one of our elementary principals, just so you know that it's really coming from.
Not us.
The hardest thing was to sit in the seat and not be able to say anything. I don't think I ever had to, um, stay as quiet. I'm Joan Siemens. I'm the principal of Minnet Forest right now. As you can hear, I have a lot of supporters. We have great teachers in all of Wareham. We have great administrators. My background is early childhood, so the pre-K to three. Um, our teachers do a great job preparing students. So to enhance the education, curriculum is the very first thing, because by having all the teachers together, all of them now are going to be able to collaborate together on their reading, their writing, their math, their handwriting, their centers. Our preschool and our kindergartens are NIAAC accredited. That's a very huge process that we go through. East, Minnet, and Deccus are all accredited. So kudos to all the teachers that had to work really hard on that. Um, so the curriculum will be the same. We'll be able to monitor that to make sure the teachers are sa, using the same materials, because there are some creative ways that teachers have, so what may happen in one school may slightly differ in another, and that could affect achievement. So by having everyone together, that's going to be a benefit to them as well. They're going to be with their peers, and I think it was Dr. Sylvia that said that. The way we have school now, this, because of the different, um, elementary schools, they don't get together until they're at middle school for the first time. So they're going to be with their peers in town now, and I think it'll be great for the students, because when they want to play ball, whether it's basketball or softball and baseball, they're going to know each other, and I think it's going to be great for the kids to work in the same school, to have recess together, and then in the community to be out, to be able to play together. I love this configuration. I've done this before in other districts where we have had, um, an early childhood center, and then there was a, a different building for elementary. And in my twelve years in Wareham, we've done pre-K to three, pre-K to one, we've redistricted, we've done a lot of configurations. Then I did pre-K to five, and no matter what we do, the teachers are always there on the first day of school to welcome those kids and give them the best education. And I can't thank enough that the work that they do and the support that they have, and we'll make sure that the kids have a quality education. And come see me anytime you want. If you want to have a tour of Minnet, I have principal's coffee. I'll have one at the end of the month. I'll get all that information out, because we want to make sure you feel comfortable, because when parents feel comfortable, then we know that's going to transfer to your children.
Okay, but I, I actually didn't hear what other districts are offering the, the setup that we're, we're proposing, because it feels like we're going to figure everything out after we decide that we're going to do it. It feels like we're going to figure out how we're going to get the buses there and how we're going to make it work after we've decided that this is how we're going to do it. So I want to know, I would like to know how we're going to do it before we decide that that's the way we should go.
Well, we know we're going to get them there. It's logistics we'll have to figure out, but we, I have my maps. I have it all mapped out as far as the classrooms, where the preschool's going to be, where the kindergarten, keeping in mind NIAAC, and that the little kids have to be close to the bathroom to meet that requirement, so.
Sure, but, but both schools are NIAAC accredited, so if, if they're getting, if I think my kid's getting a good education at Deccus and you're moving him, I want to know how this is going to enhance or improve what they're getting now, because if it's status quo, then the logistics of changing it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, if, if it's going to be the same level. I want to know that this is improving and bringing Wareham up a notch.
When you can improve the professional development of the teachers, and they are together and they're collaborating, that transfers to the learning that's taking place in the classroom. And the teachers at Minnet can share with the teachers at Deccus and, and vice versa. So you have more creativity, they're sharing lesson plans, they have time that they're together, and even at Minnet, at one teacher will, will catch a lesson, and they're going down the hall, a song that's being sung. They stop into that classroom to see what it is. Teachers, teachers are sharing all the time, and when they share great activity and great learning, that enhances our, our students' education. Even at the copy machine, I see it all the time. Um, a teacher is running something off, and somebody says, wow, can I borrow that? You know, can I do that with my class?
So are there other towns that do this?
Yes, and not all towns are NIAAC accredited. That is a huge piece for us in Wareham that we're very proud of.
Kingston does it, Mashpee.
Metapoyet.
Metapoyet, and, and these, these are successful schools. Okay. This is what I want to know. I want to know who else is doing this, and are we looking at what's happening in those districts? And is this, is this a way to improve how we're doing things here? Because I'm all for improving it, and if I have to separate my kids and figure out logistically how I'm going to do that, but that doesn't make me happy to separate them, or to logistically figure out how I'm supposed to do either two bus routes, or is there a, is there a delayed start? Like, I don't, I don't know how I can do that. So it's stretching me thin, so I want to make sure that this is really going to enhance what's going on in Wareham.
We would like you on our committee as well. And, and truly, one of the things that we've worked very hard to do since I arrived in Wareham was to look at what's being taught in one third grade is being taught in all third grades, or all first grades, or all second grades, and is the curriculum, not how they're teaching it, but what they're teaching, the same? Do our kids, are our kids receiving the same quality of education, the same exposure? Do our kids, are our kids receiving the same quality of education, the same exposure to standards as every other grade level? Part of this has been, we've had conversations between the buildings to look at the collaboration. And we have a list that's going to be developed, well, it has been developed, it will be released about for parents. When your child enters first, second, third, fourth grade, these are the expectations we have. At the end, here's what we guarantee your child will be exposed to and will be able to show mastery on or working toward mastery. But we feel like when we have all the teachers together, we will raise the rigor and we'll raise academic performance, we'll raise expectations, because we will be working as a grade-level team. And that's very, very important to us. And I would ask Chris Panerisi if she has a few statements to make.
Thank you. I'm the principal of the Deacon School, Chris Panerisi, and I really do hear the concerns that Minnetonka parents have. Just to ease your minds a little, last year, Deacon School was a level-two school. We were equal with Minnetonka. We had worked quite hard to get to that level. There was a little bit of a slip last year. So we do have a record of being equal. If you're going to just look at the levels and nothing else, we do have a record of being equivalent to the Minnetonka school. But what we really need to look at, okay, is that with the Common Core coming down, with the standards that are coming down, and all the changes from education, teaching is a very complicated thing. It is not an easy thing anymore. Maybe it never was. Maybe it just seemed easy. But it's much more difficult nowadays. And so when you have good supervision, eyes that can see what teachers are doing and helping teachers and providing collective resources and collective discussions, it's much easier when you only have to concentrate, let's face it, as an administrator, I'm going to tell you this, when you can concentrate on maybe three grades or four grades as opposed to the entire spectrum, you really become specialized in what you do. My specialty is mathematics. That is where I come from, and I have one of my students who spoke today, and I'm very proud of her. So I'm coming from that ends. I get that. So what we like to do with our talents as administrators is we like to share that talent with our staff. At the upper elementary level, of which Deacon will be, that process can really take place. Ms. Siemens' specialties, area of specialty, will take place at the lower elementary. So it's a utilization of your talent as well. But when we look at the education of the kids, anytime you pool resources, anytime people put it in the bin, everybody makes out. And that's basically what we're doing here. Yes, we have extra added benefits of the class size. That's not the reason. It just makes good sense. And having been a principal of a school from three to five in Swansea for a few years, I know the benefits of that. The lower level fed to the upper level. They concentrated on literacy. At that lower level, that's where the area of expertise was, so that when those kids entered my door in the third grade in my school in Swansea, they could read. They had those basic foundational literacy skills. Okay?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate what I said, just for everybody here. My consideration for this proposal was not fiscal. It was not economic. It was strictly academic. And I'm still very active. I'm still teaching at UMass Boston in the Teacher Education Program. There was research on this, as both these principals have said. When you have that degree of specialization, that is going to augment student achievement. When you can specialize, when you can have this kind of dialogue between teachers, and so that these teachers can get to know what the problems are with their individual students and also with the standards in the curriculum. So I think this level of specialization is a good thing. And as I said before, it wasn't, for me, it wasn't about dollars and cents. It was about giving our kids the best edge.
Yes.
Hi, Shelley Montron. And I thought this was the American Idol's. But I'm not going to sing for you. As a teacher, I grew up in Wareham. I attended Wareham Public Schools, and I've been a teacher in Wareham for 35 years. I love Wareham. And my son's student, I mean, my son's...
Teacher.
Yes.
And one of my students.
Yes.
Sorry, okay. There's a long line.
Anyone else?
Sorry.
And I just wanted to say, first of all, Ben Franklin said, the only one that likes change is a wet baby. Okay? No one likes change, you know? Change is complicated. But for someone who will, this will be my third move in three years, and you can be rest assured that after 35 years, I have a lot of stuff. I'm excited about this. I'm excited about this move. Wareham schools, the elementary schools, have always been pitted against each other. Okay? And trust me when I say, when we first started out, it was Minnetonka that had the low test scores, and it was Deacon that excelled. And it is going to be wonderful to not have to just see colleagues during workshop days. You know, to be able to work with all of these wonderful second-grade teachers throughout the school year will be wonderful, you know, being able to pool our resources to work together. I will be ending in a school that I started at in 1978, so that's going to be kind of cool. But I just wanted to say that I trust the process. I know it's been difficult. It's not an easy thing to have to present something like this, because you're always going to have people who are going to be a little nervous, they're not going to want it, and so forth. But I have to trust the process, and I have to say that I'm pleased, I'm excited to see what's going to be happening for the elementary schools.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Fitzgerald. First of all, it's good to see all of you in the same room at the same time tonight. I love the Wareham Public School so much, I teach there and have for not quite as long as Shelley. And I hear a lot of concerns about the movements, and I shared them two years ago, when in one round of cuts, the middle school history department was eviscerated, and I was moved to Deacon. And I was certainly going to be looking at kindergarteners every day. So I was pretty nervous, and I found Deacon is a really good school with really, with staff. I'm not going to talk about necessarily programs, but staff who were doing incredible things and were doing it because they loved the kids that were in front of them. And then I came back here with the fifth grade. And I have to say, as a Deacon teacher, my teaching of a novel was mainly based on a Minnetonka teacher's lessons, because they were better than mine. And I know that there is a Minnetonka teacher who asked to borrow the haiku lesson that I developed as a Deacon teacher. We're planning a field trip. Minnetonka is doing the buses, because they're better at it. Deacon is coordinating with the outreach person. It's wonderful not to have a Minnetonka team and a Deacon team and to get the best of both worlds. I was surprised by this move. When I went home, my wife, who teaches third grade, was even more surprised. But I know she's looking forward to working with all of the teachers in third, fourth grade at the same building. And I would say, anytime that you get the best together in one place, it's only going to get better. Also, as a fifth-grade teacher, I would just remind, I would just remember that there was a lot of anxiety among the children, the families, the staff, when we moved the fifth grade from Deacon, I can't keep bending over like this, when we moved the children, the children from, in fifth grade, from Deacon to Minnetonka to the middle school. And I dare say that it's gone pretty smoothly, and there seems to be a lot of excitement among the fifth graders, and we're thrilled to have them in this building, and I think they're thrilled to be here as well. I do have one question. Oh, by the way, I have to brag, two of the shots of the students in the presentation are my students, and I mention that every time. I think that with this, when this meeting was held last year, I heard a statistic, and I was just wondering if I could be reminded or if it would be updated. I was reminded of it when there was talk of revenue. There was something along the lines of, among all 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts, Wareham's revenue from its income or its GDP was something like 14th, 15th from the bottom. Could somebody in one of these committees remind me of that number and tell me if that's changed?
I believe it was the average single-family tax bill. We were, I thought approximately the 19th lowest in the Commonwealth out of the 351 cities and towns.
Okay, thanks. So 332nd. Thank you. And lastly, I would say if anybody in the audience has boxes, we're going to need them. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Say your name again if you have a mic.
My name is Jeanette Leonato, and I'm actually switching hats for a minute. I am asking a question. I am the PTA president for Minnetonka, and it does devastate me that I'm going to be leaving Mrs. Siemens, who has been phenomenal. I am looking forward to working with Deacon. One of the questions I have is currently, we're separate. We have the Village PTA, and we have the Deacon's PTA. As PTA president, what am I supposed to do with the funds? Because at the end of the school year, we always carry funds over to get us started. But now our students are going to be split, so the families that raised money on the Deacon side is now going to be on Minnetonka and vice versa.
I think this would be one of the questions that we would be putting on our Google Doc as far as consideration to be talked about among all parties that have vested interest. And we certainly would add that one, too.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again.
Can you state your name again?
Chris Holbrook.
Thanks.
My question is this. Levels of schools, I don't know, Deacon is level three?
Yes.
Minnetonka, level two?
Yes.
Middle school?
Level three. High school, level one.
But the high school is level one.
Achieved level one, yes.
So to, and again, I'm going back to the cutting positions. If you cut a position at a school that has worked so hard to climb up to level one, that would be a shame.
Yep. And I think that the committee, the administrators, the superintendent, that there is the same level of concern when it comes to where those cuts are coming from. I think that if you ask anybody on this committee, and I would say in general, that cuts to education, and I'm sure that, you know, cuts to town services, cuts just in general are not what we want to do. But going back to when you are looking at the, what's in the best interest of the classroom and the students, and that the administrators in those buildings are the one that have additional input into that process, then I'm hoping that what you will see, again, and it's full-time employees, so we're not just talking about teachers, that the cuts are going to be made in consult with the superintendent as well as the building administrators in what's in the best interest of the children, not the district, not the budget, in the best interest of the classroom and the children.
Okay, now I have one more question.
Okay.
I was at the meeting last week. There weren't a lot of parents at the meeting last week. The STEAM Academy, was that approved last week? I just thought they presented that. Was that approved?
There was no vote last week.
There was no vote, no? No, no, there was not a vote last week.
Okay. My question is this. The budget that was presented, does that include the funds for the STEAM Academy?
The STEAM Academy presented a budget that was the ultimate wish list budget, and it could, I believe it was like $56,000, $55,000. But given our financial concerns and our financial constraints, we certainly have gone back. We're looking at, how do we offer a STEAM Academy, which we are very excited about offering, on a budget that will encompass only the funds that would already be earmarked for that grade level?
So just to be clear, if there is going to be a STEAM Academy, no excess funds, you won't be taking funds from somewhere else in order to have that STEAM Academy? There will be no STEAM Academy if teachers are going to get cut?
So the budget and the line items are going to be voted on by the school committee at next week's meeting, okay? And that is each one of the line items. If any line items, any money from any line item needs to move to create a STEAM Academy, because it can't work within the budget numbers that have been approved, that has to come back to the school committee for approval. So it's not just that there, it's going to be created. If it has budget implications, it has to come back to the school committee for discussion and vote.
Can you explain what the STEAM Academy is? Yeah.
The presentation for the STEAM Academy is online. There's a PowerPoint. It talks about science, technology, mathematics, engineering, and the STEAM piece is the arts and how it's project-based. It integrates, it addresses all facets of the core curriculum, and...
Zeroed in at grade seven.
It's zeroed in at grade seven. The following year, we would project it would go up to eighth grade and extend into the eighth-grade academy for STEAM. The third year, it would go down, and then it would go up to the high school for STEAM. The acronym that is also used is STEM, but we've added the arts, because we think that's a valuable piece, and that's why it's called STEAM.
No, I'm not saying that I'm opposed to the STEAM Academy, because it sounded great. However, if you cut one teacher to take money away for that STEAM Academy, I can't see that being, I mean, it's just not, you can't keep cutting, cutting, cutting.
You're exactly right. But what we also have to do is get creative, because part of our job in education is to provide services for our students. And if we can do it in a very creative way that addresses their needs, then it's our responsibility to do so. If you look at the presentation, there was also quite a long list of businesses that we've already established relationships with that have grant money that can also help offset the purchase, the material that we need to purchase to initiate our STEAM Academy, and we're already pursuing that.
But grant money is only for a certain amount of time, and then it runs out, and then you would need to fund that program with your money, correct?
No, not necessarily. Not necessarily.
There are two ways that you can go about it. So with any grant-funded money, that you continue the work to be able to have the funding available, you see the benefits that are shown with having the STEAM Academy, and then you say that this needs to be built into the LE budget, or you cut it. And so that is a decision that's made with, again, the recommendations from the administrators, the work that the superintendent and the business manager does, as well as the other district managers, and ultimately, the approval of the school committee.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, but you're going to vote on this next week?
We're going to vote on the budget, but not the STEAM Academy.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
But how can you vote on a STEAM Academy saying, go forward for next year, if you don't know if you have the funds to go forward for next year?
I'm sorry, we're not voting on the STEAM Academy in two weeks. We're voting on the line item budget in two weeks.
Okay.
The STEAM Academy is not...
So that's not approved, and that will be approved when? I'm just asking.
Right. So the first presentation that happened last week was the first initial presentation on it.
Which, by the way, they did a great job, and they were very enthusiastic.
They did, and it's amazing, and the studies behind it.
It sounds great, but if you're going to count one teacher...
I don't have an answer for you on when that actually is going to be approved on, because it's the process that has been started, so I don't have when it's actually going to be approved.
Okay.
I think we're missing one very, very important point when it comes to cuts. And I'm the guy that always usually votes against the budget, because I never think it's adequate enough. But in terms of, there's a lot of factors that go into staff cuts. And the number-one factor in this entire committee, since I've been on it, has been dedicated to preserving class size. That was a number-one, especially at the elementary level, that we wanted to make sure that we had manageable class sizes. And so that has ramifications on staff cuts. In terms of... In terms of, of peripheral positions, we still have to service our kids. And, and sometimes we need to service them in ways that affect personnel outside the classroom. But in terms of the STEAM or any other new initiative that, that we talk about, it, it's a matter of prioritizing. And we're going to approve a line item budget. And that line item budget is going to have vast categories in it for staffing, for materials, for professional development. And when we put in a new project, then we're going to look at those line items and say, okay, if, if we feel that this is really something that can benefit our kids, then let's find a way in the budget to do it. So it's a matter of prioritizing. It's a matter of refining the line items. And it's a matter if we need to readjust the budget to come back to the school committee and say, "We want to readjust a variety of line items based on this new priority that we may or may not want." So I think that right now, talking about the, the funding and how that's going to affect class size or how it's going to affect staffing is a little premature because we have to look at the budget in its entirety. And so there's a lot, there's a lot of considerations to go into what we do in terms of staffing our school department. The other thing I have to say about staffing, and I don't want anyone to get to misunderstand this. An awful lot of times, you know, everyone knows that we've had a reduction in student population, so that has ramifications in terms of staffing, too. So I, it's not that every time we cut a position that somehow or other we're putting 30 kids in a classroom. That hasn't, you know, that, that is, that is far from our goal and far from our priorities. So the point is that because we do have enrollment that has gone down and you have to adjust your staff, your staff accordingly. And so there's a lot of things that go into staff adjustments, not just budgetary, although budgetary is a big one, but also programming, redesigning program, putting in new programs. All of that has to come out of the existence of that budget. And so a lot of times that, you know, we may be working on something in the spring or even in the summer that we think is a good idea that we'll readjust the budget for as long as the school committee approves the adjustments in the line items.
Mike?
Through you, Madam Chair to the superintendent. Do I recall correctly from our last meeting when the STEAM Academy was presented and the line item budget was presented? I believe Mr. Swett asked if the STEAM Academy was fully funded in the budget presented? And the answer was yes. Is that correct?
It is fully funded in the budget in different line items because we're still funding the same number of teachers and the same equipment for the classes. We have just reconfigured.
So if we approve the budget as is, are we in a de facto way approving the STEAM Academy for one year? We haven't even approved STEAM Academy.
You would be approving the materials, the teachers, et cetera, that would be used to make up the STEAM Academy. How it's configured in the school would depend on if it's a STEAM Academy or the regular classes because the teachers that are teaching in the STEAM Academy are presently teachers in the seventh grade.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Hi, my name is Clarence Calvin. I have four kids. You met my wife already. Quickly, just to give you a little background. I didn't grow up in a town. I grew up in Lawrence. If you already know about Lawrence, Lawrence is taken over by the state, their school department. Now, that doesn't mean every school failed. That means that some of the schools failed. So by you guys saying that, oh, well, you know, Minnet is at level whatever it was and Deacon's is at a different level, that putting them all together, you're going to get, you know, a happy medium. To be honest with you, I'm not looking for a happy medium for my kid, all right? I'm looking for a better education. Now, I know everyone on the board probably went through the school depart, school system. We have someone on the board who, whose child is currently in the school department, well, school system. My question is, can we guarantee, well, I know there's no guarantees in life, but can we guarantee that what you're trying to implement is going to be beneficial? And, and the state's not going to come in and take over because we're lacking, or whatever the case may be?
I'm not even close to that.
Yes, I can guarantee you that because I walk the buildings. I see the quality of instructors that we have, the quality of teachers. I see the caring professionals, the secretaries, everybody in our school. And I know the quality of education that is presented to our students.
Well, I know the same quality in Lawrence. I had great teachers. You know, I ended up graduating from college. I went to Lawrence High School, you know. But still, that being said, you can't, there's no, as I said, there's no guarantee that it's going to, by doing this, it's going to change. I also have another question for you.
Just to speak, just to that one point, just real quick. So, yes, there are, there is a system that, that the state would rate a school system. So it's one, two, three, and four, and five.
Yeah.
Okay. So with, with Lawrence, it is, they were way farther down the one to five system. There is, there's not a concern what's... We didn't do that on purpose, I'm sorry. It's a way to save money in the school system. But the community will, there, there is not a concern that we have here that we're anywhere near the state coming over. Being the district that we are, we actually are getting more resources. And again, with the superintendent, and I just want to reiterate, is that, that it's all about raising the bar. Every single year, it's about raising the bar and that's what we're working towards.
Okay. I got another question. Now then with the budgets, we've closed over the last couple of years a few schools. And then we reopened them again. And in order to reopen them, you had to bring them up to code. So we're spending money that way.
We haven't reopened any schools. So we...
So, so East, East, East was never closed?
Oh, East was, East was already up to code.
And then it was opened. And then Hammond was closed and now you have it occupied with the Boys and Girls Club, right? To bring additional revenue in. Am I correct? So who's to say that East isn't going to get opened again?
It's not bringing additional revenue in, but, okay.
Well, whatever the case may be. But let's just say, who's to say East isn't going to get opened again?
Nope.
And then you'd have to bring it up to code again.
It's up to code. It's already, so East is up to code.
Okay, so East is up to code, so we're just closing it for revenue, for revenue's sake.
For, well, for all the reasons that were stated here tonight about bringing the classes together and, yes, there's, there's multiple reasons.
So we're going to pay for an empty school, paying heat, and keeping the, the water going so the pipes don't freeze.
Well, that's when we start talking with our town. No, but, no, it's, I mean, it's similar to Hammond. The, each one of the town building, each one of the buildings
Yeah.
in this town are, are owned by the town.
Correct.
So we lease, right. So when a building closes,
Correct.
then it's like Hammond, it's a discussion between the town and the school system for what happens next with that building.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your question.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Allen. I live in the town. I've had children that have gone through and currently I teach kindergarten. I just wanted a little bit of clarification and it's really going to be more specific to the ages that I am involved with. We currently have 12 kindergarten classes. And it's been 12 kindergarten classes. And I'm hearing tonight that you're saying you're anticipating the population to kind of stay the same, yet our understanding has been that we're going to drop down to 10 kindergarten classes. And then we're hearing something about this multi-age, which is going to involve kindergarten and preschool. So can you address that? Because I'm looking at the standards that we have and the curriculum that we have and the rigor that it is for kindergarten. And I'm just trying to understand how a preschool and a kindergarten would work together.
Last year, we had 10 kindergarten classes. This year, we have 12 kindergarten classes. We will project what kindergarten classes we have according to enrollment. And currently, we are looking at 12 kindergarten classes for next year. The other piece is the multi-age group. That would be, if we have students, that would be multi-age appropriate. But at this point, we are all, we're in details that truly we don't have quite enough information to go into. At this point, we're still in fact-finding. We're still in trying to make sure that we have all the information we need prior to making final decisions.
Can I just ask Ms. Panerisi? Because last year, we had six kindergarten classes at Hammond. How many, I mean, at Minnet, how many kindergarten classes did you have at Deacon's last year? Only four to make it 10? You had six. So we had 12 kindergarten classes last year as well.
Okay, well, excuse me for misspeaking.
So that's my concern because right now, we're at 22 in a class. We have over 250 kindergartners. So it is a concern with not raising our numbers because our numbers are very high.
I certainly understand that and I will come back to the fact that keeping our lower grade levels, class sizes at a very reasonable level is our goal. It continues to be our goal. And that's why we're working very hard at coming up with some creative solutions in order to do that. And I'm sure that you can appreciate the fact of the need to have that done.
I can't. So then we'll get some more information about this multi-age once it's been researched and just so we kind of have an understanding on what's going on?
Absolutely. In fact, we would certainly ask for involvement. I think, I'm not sure you were at the meeting that we talked about. Then we would like collaboration with the teachers. We would like involvement because we know this is a change for everybody and we all need to work together. And so any help that you can give us, we certainly do appreciate.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm back. My name's Gabby and my question is more play-based. If you look at Minnet's play areas, we, it's not accessible for our preschoolers. Are we going to move the equipment from East to Minnet? Or we're going to bring in more money to reconstruct the play building that will appropriately?
You know, we've looked at this and, and we, that's something else that we would certainly need to explore as far as playground equipment. That would be part of a future discussion.
Okay. Are there any other questions this evening?
I'm Heather Hogan again. Exactly what things are entailed in the $103,000 discrepancy in the supplies? Like what, what, does that textbooks, is that paper and pencil? I think that's what you said at the meeting. What, what does that look like for the students and the teachers, really? Because I see how much they donate to their classrooms already, so...
So we developed the budget. We asked our, the principals to buy accounting lines that goes into even more detail to provide a list of everything that they needed for the year for all of their supplies. And that's what, you know, and so that gave us our starting number. And we did have to make some reductions, but we still had an overall increase. And it's, it's kind of across the board in all schools, trying to meet the needs of our students. And this is as the principals outlined. So it's no one particular item or no one particular class. It's across the board, trying to meet the needs of the students in the schools.
Does that include textbooks? Is, is that updating textbooks and...
There are separate accounts.
Okay, that was my question. So it's really like paper, glue?
There are some textbooks in that. And there are some textbooks in the supplies and materials line, yes.
Okay. And, you know, I, I think about going to the community. I know that that's a huge initiative of Mrs. Shaverhood. So, you know, I really think that, I, I love that you asked the parents' input and the committees. So I think that a great idea would be to have people working in the community to try and generate donations from, you know, there's organizations and, and corporations that donate that kind of thing to struggling school districts. So, you know, if there's, I, I love the idea of a grant writer. And, you know, I think that there must be some organization that could, could donate that stuff. So, you know, if you can find people to look more on that kind of level of helping, because I see the teachers, one of my kid's teachers, I think she must spend $100 a week in supplies and incentives. And, and actually, I can say that through the years, that's how it's been because my kids have had phenomenal teachers. And I, I just would hate to see them have to put more into their classrooms. So...
We understand. Thank you.
Thank, thank you again.
Thank you. Any last, yep?
Hi, my name is Allison Bumpus. I just had a question about the LEET program over at Deacon's. Whereas right now, it's set up where they're split. The K1 and 2 is grouped together and then the three, grades three and four students are grouped together. Whereas next year, they won't be in the same schools. How will those children be split?
As they are sub-separate programs, so they would stay with their grade levels?
They would stay with their grade levels. Okay, thank you. Okay. Yes.
Sorry, last question. I just wanted to understand. So you vote on this budget in the next two weeks? Is that what I was understanding? And the budget is based on redistricting, correct, the elementary schools? But we don't have all the, all the, all the facts? So we're kind of, we're going to vote to move ahead with it before we know all the logistical? And I don't need facts, like I don't, you know, about how many kindergarten classes. I don't want to know who you're laying off or not laying off. But logistics, like how long is my kid going to be on the bus, I think are concerns that parents have and wanting to know, you know, what's going forward. But it sounds like we're voting before we get all of that information and then the fact-finding happens after?
No, the, the thing that I would say about it is that there, there's a difference between the amount of work that went into this decision and looking at all the different aspects of what would go into making this redist, this reconfiguration successful. I think that when it comes to the, the communication around that, we think that it's important to be able to present different findings and different proposals and then have community members and teachers and having open forums like this to be able to buy into that. Tonight's meeting cannot go into every single detail of that. It's really at a high level. But I guarantee you, the amount of work that went into this, even before presenting it as an option, was immense. And so really, it's now taking it to the next level, presenting each piece and then being able to have the feedback come that way.
Okay, so the vote doesn't happen until we get more...
No, the vote for the budget will happen in two weeks.
And that is going to be redistricting?
The vote will happen from the school committee on the budget that we are proposing that will go into the overall town budget, which is our budget, all of our budgets. And then it goes through another series. Do you want to, yes?
I know trust is hard. I will, I will say this after eight-plus years on the school committee. Teaching is really hard. Logistics, relatively speaking, is easy.
For you. Logistics, because you don't have to worry about where your kindergartner and your second grader is and how you're getting them on and off the bus. And who, what neighbor do you call because you can't make it for the first bus and you're just trying to scramble to get to the second bus? So, and we just moved the fifth graders out. And, and I was sat here through those meetings and there were concerns about that. And everything has gone smoothly, but we moved those fifth graders out to make room in these elementary schools so that we can shut down another school, so that we can just push more kids in, so...
I wasn't minimizing your logistics. But what I'm saying is, it's relatively easy compared to teaching. And I am certain our transportation manager over there has been listening intently and his mind has been working overtime, trying to figure out, and he will do it, how to minimize the inconvenience and the time associated with transporting children to school. I am certain he's going to do that well because he's doing his job really well. And the final comment I'll make is, I have, I strongly supported the hiring of our new superintendent. Part of the reason was that I had a feeling she was going to be really good at making lemonade out of lemons. I'm sure she wishes a new crate of lemons didn't show up at her door on a regular basis. But so far, and this budget process is proving it to me, she's really good at doing it. So I think we need to, I know it's a hard word, trust, have confidence, whatever words you want to use, that she is going to continue a great track record in a short period of time of finding really good ways to do really good things with less money.
I, I agree that Wareham needs some shaken up. And I think that we need to, we needed some new faces to really shuffle the things around to work with what limited resources we have. I don't disagree that we needed that. I absolutely...
But we're extremely sensitive to your concerns.
Just another comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to add a comment at this point. I also want to thank the superintendent and the school committee for all their hard work on their budget. And I'll apologize to the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator and the rest of my committee because we haven't had a chance to talk about the town budget yet. But I think all of you should be aware of what the town is facing on the town side. Right now, we have an estimated $2.4 million shortfall. So although you can vote for this school budget and knowing that it's really not adequate or what we'd all like to see for the education, just know that it's just one part of the shortfall that this town is facing. We're going to do a lot of work... We're going to do a lot of work in the next four or five months and try to come up with an answer, but there are no easy answers on the town side either, and we're going to be faced with the same kind of cuts. So I appreciate all of you coming out and voicing your concerns now. I hope you pay attention to the overall budget talks and understand what's going on, and I invite all of you to come to town meeting as well, because the same discussions will be taking place there. And if any of you want to come to the budget hearings, we had some conversation about transparency. We hold our meetings on Wednesday nights. Anyone's welcome to come and ask questions. So, thank you.
We are transparent, very much so.
Yes.
Hi, my name's Laureen Deacon, and no relation to the Deacon School, however, my children have attended and do attend, and I've had a fantastic experience there. I just have two fairly quick questions for you. One, I noted that there was 13 or 16 FTE positions possibly being eliminated, however, that the health insurance or the insurance was going up $3 million this year, and I'm wondering how that could be.
Easy.
We're not laughing at the question, we're laughing at the absurdity in general in this country of healthcare costs in the skyrocketing way that it's going up. But I will... Who would like to answer that? Yep.
Six, if you look at 6%, even of $7 million, that's, you know, that's $420,000 right there. The healthcare is not going up 3 million from last year. What happened was, the year there was the healthcare holiday, and when you do the in-kind calculation, because of the healthcare holiday, that was artificially lowered, because the town essentially did not pay those costs. There was a holiday to the town.
That was a fantastic idea.
So the next year, not only did we not have a holiday, we paid the full amount of the healthcare, we also had to put the funds back into the health trust. So there's your large increase.
I see. Thank you for that explanation. It's helpful for me, as I'm sure other parents. And as a parent of a kindergartner, I would wonder if there's been any consideration to grandfathering our current kindergarteners of Deacon's School and our current 4th graders of Minnet, who are already going to be experiencing some transitions coming up. So for instance, the 4th grader at Minnet would be transitioning to the 5th grade fairly shortly, or would it be 3rd grade? I'm confused with whatever it is. But grandfathering those kids so they didn't have to go through two transitions. For instance, our babies and their babies, let's be honest, have already had the transition of kindergarten, full day, without really an option of that. Having that experience, then getting settled into that routine, now having to change to another school, and although there might be some familiar faces with the staff, it's a new building, it's a multi-level building, it's entirely different setup, to get used to that for a year, and then transition back to Deacon's School for 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, before we prepare them to transition once again for 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, and then possibly another transition for high school. So just a question of grandfathering, possibly? Or would you be willing to put it on your Google list and think about it?
Google, oh, I was going to Google listed and ask you to be on the committee, too.
I would love to be, thank you. Can't wait to join you.
I hear a lot of concerns about transitioning. And my entire life was a transition as a military brat.
That explains a lot.
I'm sorry, sir.
And I transferred, transitioned through several schools in the process along the way, and what I found is, the one thing that I missed the most, or one thing that helped the most, would be the kids that were my friends, that I was missing. And I think that's one of the things that's missing in this, is the children that are in their class now are going over to the same school with them.
Very understood, sir. That's not missing at all.
That's not, I know.
That's not missing. I think as parents, we all get that, that their friends are going to be there, sir. That's not the concern.
Sometimes transition isn't a bad thing either. Do you, I mean, I...
For specific students, you very well could be correct, and that was a choice that your parents made for you.
This was.
This is a choice that's really being made for us. We were asked to have our opinion shared today, and that's what we're doing here, because our job is to advocate for our kids.
I'm just, I was just curious. I'm not trying to be, you know, confrontational, I'm just, it wasn't a choice my parents made, it was a choice the government made to move them along. I don't think they really had a lot of options at that point. But I just, I just was curious, because I hear a lot of, a lot of what I heard tonight is about transition, and I think that sometimes it...
And I can speak to that, and I would love to speak to that at length. I'm sure, though, at 9:20, the rest of the audience doesn't want me to do that, but I can tell you that I've conducted research on that. I am in the child protective field for the last 17 years. I have been a parent for 13 years, and think I'm doing a pretty good job of it, but I understand it's my job as a parent to educate myself to this. And to that degree, I did go and get a master's degree in that, and I can tell you that transition in early childhood has no positiveness. It has negative reinforcements, negative consequences all down the line. And there's research through the 1980s that can show you that. So I am not necessarily opposed to change. I think actually, change is a wonderful thing. It's fantastic. My concern is transition and change for babies, and they are babies, sir, at 5 years old. They're babies. It's called reactive attachment disorder, and we can talk about RAD for the next two hours if you'd like. It's concerning, and I just want people to be aware of it, and consider lessening the changes for our babies.
Okay, so, I appreciate that, and I think that your opinion is absolutely respected, and the research that you've done, and the work that you've put into it. So I wanted to start off by saying that. But I also think that it's important to understand that the administrators in this district has also, have also done a ton, and a ton of research on it. So there are several different data points that go into that, and again, encourage you to be part of the process, to be able to communicate the education and the background that you have, but also to have that respectful debate with the administrators and all the time and energy that went back into us, because I think that the points that you have, they could easily counterpoint, not that this should be a tit-for-tat, but they have as much...
No, it needs to be cooperative.
Exactly, it has to be cooperative, and there's a lot of data points that show that this is, it's not detrimental to the learning of students. And just from a personal note, my 2nd grader was the last one that went through Hammond, that's now in Minnet, that will be going to Deacon's, and then, so they will, he will be that five-transition kid. I'm going to call him the five-transition kid like $5 million man. But the important thing to me, and I hope that every single parent in this district demands, is that work around transition, opening up the schools, talking with the parents, having that support system in place for the parents, as well as everyone that's going to be affected by this, but especially the students.
Absolutely.
So then, when they're going in there. So that's what I hope that we all concentrate on, not whether this is, you know, there's a lot of research.
Absolutely, hence why I asked you just to Google. Just put it on your list of possibly. I'm not saying it has to happen. I get that these things are beneficial for the community in general, and that change has to happen. The least amount of transitions is always in the best interest of the kids.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Yes, thank you.
I think that, you know, I absolutely understand everything you said, and, you know, I too have a few degrees, and, but we're using the word transition as if these kids are going to a different school with a different staff. This is not a true transition in the true sense of the word.
They're not going to a different school, sir?
These kids are going with their same students, with their same classmates, with many of their same teachers to a different school. So it's not like they're going to another town, another school, meeting new kids. So it's not a transition in the true sense of the word.
You almost, I almost walked away. You almost had me gone, so let me just speak quickly to that, sir. They are going to a new school, they are going to be transitioned with some of the students that they were with, however, a lot of these children are leaving their siblings because they're older and going to different schools. And let me assure you, not mine, so it's not particularly to me, but for instance, there's children who cry still every day, kindergartners, to get on the bus, but their sister or brother holds their hand. They are going to be seeing some of the same teachers, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the corridor that used to hold them together, it's a transition. Maybe not for you or I after going through degrees in school.
It's not a transition in the true sense of the word.
What is the true sense of the word, sir?
No, 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 okay, I'm going to, hold on. Here's the thing. We're getting caught up in semantics over a word, meaning that there, it is, when you basically say the word "transition," I bet that I could pull everybody in here, and they're going to have a different five-point, you know, explanation of that. So what I would ask in this is that this is the right conversation to have. I would like it to happen when we're talking about specifics around transition. So when we get into the details of the support that's needed, what is needed for kids, what's needed for teachers, all of those pieces, I want those conversations to happen. I think that here, if we get into a debate around what does transition mean and whether they're going to have it or not, it's going to be, it's a never-ending cycle.
Completely understood, completely.
So I would just ask that this conversation, it's fruitful, it's amazing, I'd love it, but let's do it in the context of, all right, and here's the next steps, and here's what needs to happen to make sure that the right support system is in there for our children.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I promise I'm walking away now, but I just want to say how disheartening it is to hear, though, as a parent, that somebody, I'm assuming Dr. Sylvia, that you're on the school committee, my own ignorance, I don't know that, but you're sitting up there, to hear you say that it isn't a transition is so disheartening to me.
Again, again, it's just a transition. I think that you both probably have a different term around transition.
Could I just respond? My name was used. I didn't say it wasn't a transition, I'm just saying it's not a transition in your normal sense.
Okay, I'm just, I'm going to stop. Superintendent wants to...
As we conclude, if you have questions, if you look on the website, there's budget information, there's also a place that you can submit questions. They go directly to me. I will respond if you ask a question. If you just make a statement and there's no question, I'm not really sure what I'm supposed to respond to, but I will read it. We then, we're taking the questions and we're posting them on Frequently Asked Questions so everyone can see. I would urge you to please, if you have questions, please, please ask. The other piece is, if you would like to be part of the committee, as we move forward, please volunteer.
I want to make sure this is a public hearing, so is there anyone else that would like to address the committee? All right. I want to end by saying that, again, I am floored by the comments, the questions, and just the people that are in this room tonight, that it screams how much you care about not only your own kids, but this district, this school system, and that you are willing to, to have your voices heard and have input into this process. And I can't tell you how important that is, not only for the school, but also for this town. So again, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight and following up on what the superintendent said. WarehamPublicSchools.org, information can be there. Become more educated around light items and all of that, and if you have questions or want to be part of the process, please, please get involved. So with that, I will...
Maybe just remind that we do have citizens' participation at the beginning of our next meeting?
Yes, at every single school committee meeting on the agenda, the first thing on the agenda is public participation. At any time, any member of the town, anyone can address the committee in the first, on the first agenda item at every single school committee meeting. And school committee meetings, agendas are posted at WarehamPublicSchools.org, and I swear, I'm done saying it, but it's a great site, people need to go there. Anything else? Yes?
Just with your permission, could we close first, and then let you close last? I just want to say just a couple of remarks in closing.
Yes, of course.
Before we adjourn, first off, I was in the Wareham Public Schools, grades 1 through 8. I transitioned, I guess is the term of art these days, six different times, and I could rattle them off for you in 10 seconds. East Wareham 1st grade, I was supposed to go to the Pilgrim School in 2nd grade, that institution, rather than have me walk through its doors, chose to burn itself down, two days before school started, so I went to Minnet for 2nd grade. 3rd and 4th in the elementary school, that's now the multi-service center. 5th and 6th, back to Minnet. 7th, back in the elementary school. 8th grade at that time was in the high school. So I guess depending upon your opinion of me, you should either be very reassured or very horrified. The second thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to thank the school committee and the superintendent for a most entertaining and comprehensive budget here. I know that I'm looking at various administrators in the front rows here, who obviously had a lot of hard work that went into this. I'd like to thank them as well, so with that, a motion. Motion to adjourn made by Selectman Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whiteside, all in favor. I oppose to saying 300. Thank you, and good night.
And before that, I asked the Fincom to adjourn. Need a fun night? Harlem Wizards, Wareham High School, 7:00 PM Saturday night, it is a blast. Please come to see the Harlem Wizards this Saturday night at 7 o'clock, and you will seriously crack up. So please come and support your schools that way also.
And Mr. Faunt is a referee.
And Mr. Faunt is a referee, and it's okay to scream at him, so. So sorry about that. Mr. McDonald?
All right, well, I want to thank the superintendent and her staff as well, and the good questions tonight, because next week, we begin our process on the Finance Committee in earnest to look at the entire budget. So I'd invite you to, our meetings are also on Wednesday night. Sometimes we're a little more animated than the school committee is. But it is, it is important, if any of you are voters, to be at town meeting, because a lot of decisions will be made at town meeting that affect the school as well as the rest of the town. So if you're a voter, please show up to town meeting, and with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?